Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Ms. Gwass.
Here.
Mrs. Herrick.
Here.
Mr. Hong. Mrs. Reese.
Here.
President Lacks.
Here, we have a quorum, please rise to salute the flag that way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News Tribune, the Alternative Press of East Brunswick, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotape meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening, and as I see, we have a special start to these very special evening. We are going to ask Mr. Juliana to go to the front of the stage, and we are going to be administering the oath of office to our two brand-new Board members. Do you want to call them up one at a time? All right, Heather James, would you like to make your way?
Mr. Goswami.
Oh, we're doing, well, you had it.
Just saying, I follow directions.
No, you did have to.
I'm so sorry, Pankaj. Mr. Goswami, would you please come up and if you'd like to have your family join
Mr. Goswami, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Pankaj Goswami.
I, Pankaj Goswami.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do solemnly swear.
And I do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member.
For the office of member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All duties of that office.
All duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
Oh, I think that's great.
Stand, this is fine. Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. James, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Heather James.
I, Heather James.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do solemnly swear.
And I do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member.
For the office of member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All duties of that office.
All duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you for me. Now you can have the baby.
Great job, girl.
So I don't believe we've ever done two of these in one night, which is why we're at Hammer Schul for such a special occasion, right? I want to say a quick welcome to our new members. We're excited to have you be here. Pankaj, you wanna say a quick hello, thank your family? Heather, we're gonna.
So I want to express my heartfelt gratitude and thank you all the seven Board members who selected me. And their confidence on me, and I will do all the right things and take the right decisions for our community. I will also would like to thank my wife, Tapashi Saha, and my son, Akshaj Goswami, for their unwavering support and love. I will also like to say that in the past six months, there has been a lot of turmoil in the community regarding our children's education. I want to ensure that I will be accessible to every parent of East Brunswick community, and I will work with our school Board members and the school administration in unity and harmony to ensure that we make the best decisions for our children. I am committed to work for all East Brunswick residents and their children so that they can be proud of our schools and our community. And it's my sworn obligation to assist everyone in our district and with honor and class. I look forward to meeting everyone and discussing all the options with an open mind. I am excited to begin this important journey and make meaningful impact to our community and our schools. Once again, thank you so much for granting me this opportunity to serve our community. God bless America.
Thank you. And welcome to Dr. James.
Hello, everyone. I'd also like to thank you for giving me this time to introduce myself. I'm Heather James, and I'm really grateful to be here with all of you. Thank you for the Board, to the Board for giving me this opportunity, and to my wonderful husband, Rob, down there recording embarrassingly, and to my son in absentia and his friends who filled in for him today. I could not be more proud to volunteer for our community in this way, and hopefully to help inspire the next generation to do something like this as well, because I do believe that volunteerism is at the heart of everything that we do here. I moved to East Brunswick with my son for our Blue Ribbon Public Schools, and I'm so glad I did. He's 11. Obviously, I have another vested interest now in staying in the schools. This one is zero, but more than that, I have an interest in all of our children and just in East Brunswick in general. And I really hope that I can be a voice for the community. I want you to know that I'm always here to listen, help if I can, and you know that you can find me if you need me. I'm an educator myself, I'm a public college professor. I deal with budgeting and legislation in my work as a legislative representative for the City University of New York, and I'm, of course, first a PTA volunteer and a parent. So I hope to bring my expertise here, and I just want to close out by saying, I know that it's Faculty Staff Appreciation Night, Teacher Appreciation. I think a lot of folks aren't here yet, but for those that are, I just want to say, I've been in many classrooms, I know how hard the job is, I know that it's a lot more than what people see. It's all those little interactions that are thankless, that aren't remunerated. You know, educators don't do it for the money, they do it for that kid who remembers you 15 years down the line, even though they never came back and said, "Thank you," you changed their lives. So my utmost respect is for you, and I'm so grateful that this is a day of my swearing in. Congratulations.
Yes, you guys picked the right time. Always wonderful to be here for happy occasions, but the first thing you're gonna get to do as new Board members is you're going to vote on our annual action. So I'm going to ask for a motion for the 36 items this evening.
Motion.
Thank you, so a motion by Mrs. Herrick, second by Mrs. Becker, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. See, I had the page, I lost it, sorry. As we do each meeting, we're going to go into closed session, but when we return, you'll be here for a fun audience. I apologize.
There are two more items.
Do I have to do another motion then?
Well, for the 37, number 37 and 38.
I'm so sorry. See, you know it's live. May I please have a motion for items 37 and 38 that I left off?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Gwass. Second by Mr. Cummings, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and it gave me time to find my closed session resolution. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session, the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows: Those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of closed session is estimated to be 30 minutes, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action will be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforementioned subjects, and be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares that its discussion of the aforementioned subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mrs. Herrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We shall see you in 30 minutes when the festivities begin. Okay, welcome back. This is more like it. Before we get to what we're all here for, I'm gonna ask Dr. Valesky to tell us what is going on in the district.
Thank you, President Lacks. Good evening, everyone. It's a great night to be together, and the video will appear on the side screens as well as the screen right in front of us in case you need to turn. Ivy Schwam, Student Assistant Specialist at Frost Elementary School, hosted yoga and mindfulness before school for students taking the NJSLA testing. This was a huge hit with the students. On Monday, May 13th, the Community Programs Adult School celebrated their citizenship, English as a second language, and high school equivalency students. Board Member Lori Herrick, Mayor Brad Cohen, and I spoke at the event to support and celebrate these students, as well as several students sharing their own personal stories of their success. Seven local adult students obtained their citizenship, received their certificates of nationalization over the course of the school year, and by the way, they know the Constitution better than probably any of us. Students, families, and friends brought food from various cultures, and the night ended in a song led by two of our teachers, Brian Lavery and Jennifer Beech Everly. This free program is run by Community Programs headed by Anne Marie Gilbert and funded by Title II Grant from the Department of Labor. On Tuesday, May 14th, Hammer Schul Upper Elementary School hosted a Student STEM and Robotics Showcase Night. It was a dynamic celebration of STEM, robotics, and coding for 4th, 5th, and 6th graders. Students were engaged and inspired by science fair-style event which provided an immersive experience tailored to their interests and curiosities. Attendees explored a variety of student projects, from remotely controlled student-built VEX robots to playing with student-constructed cardboard micro-bit pets and Hummy Bird scenes. The collaboration with the East Brunswick High School Coding Club added an extra layer of excitement. The Hughes Student STEM and Robotics Showcase celebrated the limitless potential of young minds when provided with the opportunities to immerse themselves in the realms of STEM coding and robotics. I had the pleasure of attending and speaking at the Annual Unity Walk, which was held on Monday, May 20th, at the Municipal Pond. Board Member Tim Cummings was the featured speaker, and Board Members Lori Herrick and Heather James also attended. On Wednesday, May 22nd, I joined the Central Elementary School students and staff as they lined Cranberry Road enthusiastically cheering and showing their support as the honor escort welcomed the American Veterans Traveling Tribute Traveling Vietnam Wall to East Brunswick Community Arts Center. Their presence highlighted the community's respect and gratitude for veterans. The wall will be on display from May 23rd through May 27th, and that's at the East Brunswick Community Arts Center. Students in the Early Learning Academy preschool program have been loving spring. After planting seeds, their plants grew so tall that they had to give them a haircut, and they welcome caterpillars to their classroom, and they're beginning to observe the life cycle of a butterfly. And you have to look at the right side of the screen, the red dish, but there was a lot of curiosity and some giggles when students learned how earthworms were vital to our ecosystem. It's always interesting to put worms with kids. Lastly, students also enjoyed exploring Welcome to the Jungle on Ray Rousseau-inspired Tiger in the Grass. The Academics Department is hosting an AI Parent University on Wednesday, May 29th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., and that's right here in the JM PAC at Hammer Schul Upper Elementary School. Dr. Herb Perluzzo, our Supervisor of Educational Technology, will be updating everyone about the district's artificial intelligence initiatives, along with training for those interested in learning how to use generative AI tools effective and safely for many tasks. Just a reminder that the East Brunswick School's outdoor spring art walk at the Township Municipal Complex will run through June 7th, and it's an interactive experience, so I encourage you to go and take your cellphone with you. Tomorrow, Friday, May 24th, is a single-session day for all students and staff. Lunch will be served for students in grades K through 6. Monday, May 27th, schools will be closed, and I hope everyone enjoys the long weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Long weekend time means it's our favorite day when we get to thank our wonderful staff, our support staff, and our teacher awards. This is a great night for all of us, it's a great night for you, and I am going to let the people that know you best, your building principals, talk more about each of you, and we are going to adjourn if everyone will follow me to the audience so we can watch
Just when you thought you were done listening to me. Good evening again, everyone. It is with great pleasure that I stand before you tonight to acknowledge and celebrate the remarkable achievements of our dedicated staff at East Brunswick Public Schools. Each year, we come together to honor those whose exceptional commitment and hard work have made a significant impact in our school community. Firstly, to our teachers, who are the backbone of our educational system. Your innovative teaching methods, unwavering dedication, and genuine care for your students do not go unnoticed. You inspire curiosity, you foster creativity, and you shape the future, one student at a time. And tonight, we recognize those among you who have gone above and beyond, setting new standards for excellence in education. To our support staff, those behind-the-scenes efforts ensure our schools run smoothly. Your contributions are invaluable. From maintaining our facilities, managing our office, to supporting our students, their diverse needs, and keeping us protected, you are the unsung heroes of our school system, and we are deeply grateful for your hard work and dedication. To all of our award recipients tonight, including those who have reached monumental milestones, and believe it or not, 25 years of service and 40 years of service here in East Brunswick Public Schools. Your passion, dedication, and exceptional service set you apart. You embody the spirit of EBPS, and we are incredibly proud to honor you tonight. Your achievements inspire us all to strive for greatness and remind us of the profound impact one individual can have on the entire school community. So thank you for your outstanding contributions and for making East Brunswick Public Schools a place where excellence is not just a goal, but a reality. So congratulations to all of our recipients tonight. It is now my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Lori Lacks, our President of the Board of Education, to say a few words.
I didn't know. That's why I said that there. I'm so sorry, so I didn't know I was speaking, but this is actually a very easy thing to talk about, because the people that were here for 40 years, by the way, I was one of their students, so I get to come and speak to you as both an alumni and also a parent in the district, or former parent in the district. My daughter just got home from college, yay for all the people that were new freshman parents. And I have to tell you, the reason I'm telling you that is because my daughter is at a very academically rigorous school, and she excelled, made Dean's List, is very proud, and she told me it's because of the education she got here. And I felt the same way when I went to school, and Dr. Valesky said it best, it's not just the teachers that touch our children, it's the people behind the scenes. You never realize the relationships your children have until you're a PTA mom doing Staff Appreciation Week, and they're selling roses or little notes, and you sit down with your kids and think you're gonna have, you know, 4th grade, two teachers that you have to worry about, and your kid has a list of 30 people. And it's actually a pretty cool thing, because you realize how many people have impacts on our children. So I thank you for that from every single person that works in our buildings. I hope that you always feel appreciated. I apologize sometimes that you don't, but I can tell you that we do truly appreciate all that you guys do, and I hope you really enjoy tonight, because this is all about you, so, thank you.
And now, Mrs. Joanne Shmuelowitz, President of East Brunswick Principals and Supervisors Association, will make a few remarks.
Good evening, everybody. I'm thrilled to be here tonight on behalf of the East Brunswick Principals and Supervisors Association to recognize tonight's recipients. Having the opportunity to talk about East Brunswick's finest teachers and support staff members is a treat. All of the members of East Brunswick PSA feel fortunate to be surrounded by the excellence of our teachers and support staff, and I personally have been lucky to work in many of our schools and witness this magic firsthand. Tonight's recipients, like their predecessors before them, are the heart and soul of this district. Tonight, we're here to recognize the best of the best in the East Brunswick Public Schools, a group of individuals who do this work because they love it, because they're dedicated to the success of our students, and most importantly, because they know that the work they do makes a difference. On behalf of EBPSA, it's with deep appreciation and gratitude that we thank you for your work here in East Brunswick. As former teachers, counselors, and certificated professionals, the members of EBPSA know how hard you all work every day, and we're so grateful for each and every one of you. As administrators, we know how valuable your contributions are to our children's success.
Now, I would like to invite Dr. Dianne Zimbicki, President of the East Brunswick Education Association, to say a few words.
Thank you, welcome, everyone. I'm here tonight representing the 1,400 members of the East Brunswick Education Association in honoring these wonderful 23 individuals for Teacher and Support Staff of the Year. So as I prepared for the evening, I always try to come up with a theme, and I sought inspiration appropriately to honor this group when I thought about the butterfly and how cool the Early Learning Academy happened to be learning about butterflies, right? And as we know, butterflies go through many stages, four stages of a life cycle, symbolizing growth and new beginnings. It's a powerful emblem of transformation and the incredible feats achievable when we trust ourselves and embrace in the continuous process of learning and growing. In education, we too experience stages of transformation. Each stage brings new joys, new challenges, and change, and these changes are opportunities for development and growth. In our educational journey, we nurture the butterflies in our schools, the students, and we help them to transform, to become their best selves, and that's all of us, right? Every single category of EBA members in our schools. There's no profession, this is profound, right? There's no profession that embraces change as dynamically as we do in education, right? Everybody that's in education knows that for sure. Each year brings new classes to teach, new initiatives, new leadership, new students, new parents, new... We embrace change, and that's sort of what the butterfly is all about, right? Embracing, growing, changing, going through those stages. So I want to thank all of our butterflies here tonight, and I want to congratulate the 22 employees that are getting 25 years' service and the three for the 40 years of service. That is truly unbelievably almost impossible, right? 40 years of service. Did a little research, and we only had 16 people in the history of us collecting data, which goes back into the 1970s, that achieved 40 years of service. So that is really an awesome feat. So I want to thank you all for coming and celebrating the best of the best here in East Brunswick. So thank you.
Now, to get us to the good stuff, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Nicole Tibbetts, Director of Human Resources.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. Good evening, welcome, and thank you all for joining us here tonight for our staff awards ceremony. It's your presence that makes this night extra special. Tonight, we celebrate 49 outstanding East Brunswick Public Schools staff members. These staff members are dedicated to giving our students roots, helping them to stretch and grow and reach new heights. Obviously, Dana, you and I were thinking the same thing. You went with butterfly, I went with the tree. They tend to their work with extreme care. Some of these staff members are the master gardeners, watching over our students daily, tending to their every need. Others are the fence around those new sprouts, keeping them protected from storms. Others are the sun, caring for the students from a distance but serving a vital role. Others are the sun, caring for the students from a distance but serving a vital role. Regardless of their position in the district, each one plays an important part in ensuring the success of the students of East Brunswick. Tonight, we honor and thank each of them for their quiet nurturing. Their best work is often only ever seen through the eyes of a child, and that is what matters most to each of them. Their dedication and commitment to the excellence of East Brunswick Schools is truly appreciated. I'm going to wait for the next slide to pop up. There we go. Now, we're ready to begin. This evening, I'm truly honored to recognize someone whose dedication, warmth, and tireless commitment have touched the hearts of everyone around them. This individual embodies the essence of what it means to be not just a support staff member, but a beacon of care, positivity, and unwavering dedication. In every workplace, there's that one person who radiates warmth and kindness and who greets you with a smile that brightens even the gloomiest of days. For us, that person is Jody Liberty. Jody has been with the district in the Financial Services Department for 20 years as a senior bookkeeper. She handles cash receipts, maintains grants the district receives, tracks many extensive construction projects, and is responsible for reviewing student activity fund transactions, to just name a few of her tasks. Jody is extremely organized, dependable, and handles interactions with parents, coworkers, and administrators with patience and a sincere desire to help. As a result, people always feel comfortable seeking her support. That being said, Jody is more than just a support staff member. She is a cornerstone of our team, the glue that binds us together with her endless positivity and infectious enthusiasm. From the moment you walk through the door, you're greeted by her welcoming presence, a reminder that you are valued and cared for. It's not just about the warm greetings or the friendly conversations, it's about the countless ways Jody goes above and beyond her duties to ensure that everyone feels supported and appreciated. Whether it's staying late to lend a hand, listening attentively to someone in need, or offering a word of encouragement when times get tough, Jody never hesitates to go the extra mile. Perhaps what truly sets Jody apart is her genuine compassion and empathy. She has an innate ability to connect with others on a deeper level, to understand their needs and concerns, and to offer support in any way she can. It's not just about doing her job, it's about making a difference in the lives of those around her, one small act of kindness at a time. Today, we honor Jody as our Support Staff Member of the Year. Let us take a moment to express our heartfelt gratitude for all that she does. Her unwavering dedication, her boundless compassion, and her infectious positivity inspire all of us to be better, to strive for excellence, and to never underestimate the power of a caring heart. Thank you, Jody, for being the shining light in the Finance Department, for reminding us of the importance of kindness and empathy, and for showing us what it truly means to go above and beyond. And while Jody couldn't be here tonight, she's not just the support staff member, she's a true champion of care and unwavering dedication, and we want to wish her a congratulations on this well-deserved honor.
Good evening. I am Kristin Christina, and I am the proud principal of Bow Monroe Elementary School. And I'm honored to tell you about our Bow Monroe Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Michelle Marone. Michelle is the kind of... Go ahead, she deserves it. Michelle is the kind of teacher that every principal wishes to have on their staff. She is the ultimate team player. She brings a positive energy and enthusiasm to our building. She has proven that she is always up for a challenge, and she never shies away from new learning opportunities. Michelle began her career in East Brunswick Schools working as an instructional assistant. In this role, she developed meaningful relationships with East Brunswick staff, students, and families, and she was quickly reminded of how much she loved working in the classroom as she had worked many years before in New York. Her return to full-time teaching included the unexpected challenge of teaching through COVID-19, but that wasn't a deterrent for Mrs. Marone. She worked tirelessly to meet her students' needs while maintaining district expectations as a new teacher. And exploring the new technology is necessary during that very difficult time. At Bow Monroe, Mrs. Marone began as a 5th grade integrated language arts teacher. Michelle recently took on the challenge of teaching 4th grade, which included teaching mathematics and science in addition to reading, writing, and social studies. And while she was worried about the transition at first, Michelle did what she always does. She tackled the challenge. She dove in headfirst to learn more about astronomy, motion and design, and her favorite, those frogs, crabs, and millipedes. Through hard work and collaboration, Michelle also developed exceptional skills as an envisioned math teacher, and in fact, she found that she loved teaching math so much that she volunteered to advise the Math Club at Bow Monroe. Her vigor and excitement captivates students during lessons. One of her favorite parts of each day is when she reads aloud to her students, and in turn, her students will tell you it has also become their favorite part of each day. Michelle draws her students in with her thoughtful questioning, her varying tone, volume, silly voices, and grand gestures. Mrs. Marone's passion for language arts instruction is contagious. Her colleagues love to observe her in action, and her students learn to love reading as well. Michelle is the kind of teacher who effortlessly creates a strong rapport with her students and their families. Her fun-loving and kind personality demonstrates just how much she truly cares about her students. She takes the time to communicate with parents about the students' needs, and she's willing to guarantee that her students have every opportunity and necessary tool to be successful. She sets high expectations for the learners in her room and celebrates their achievements, no matter how big or small, and in turn, her students become more proud, more self-assured, and confident, having had Mrs. Marone as their teacher. Outside of her teaching duties, Michelle is involved in many committees and clubs at Bow Monroe. She's always willing to lend a hand with any school-wide project. She's a committed and active member of our School Climate and Safety Committee, leading the staff in meaningful activities for Kindness Week and planning Diversity Night. And in addition to the Math Club this year, she served as a cooperating teacher for a student teacher from Seton Hall. She runs Homework Club after school. She took over as the advisor of the 4th grade Safety Club. She tutors, and she supports her colleagues as the building representative for the EBEA. Clearly, Michelle is deserving of this honor, and we are so very proud to call her Bow Monroe's Teacher of the Year. The Bow Monroe Support Staff winner for this year is Lead School Security Officer, Mr. Kevin Pascal. Kevin is an essential component of the Bow Monroe staff. His attention to detail, dependability, and trustworthiness are highly respected and appreciated by our entire school community. Kevin is often the first person parents and students see each day. Kevin welcomes our families each morning, whether they come in early for morning care or arriving for school in our car loop. And every afternoon, he supports parents with parking as they wait during student dismissal. And during these moments, Kevin takes the time to speak to our families and build relationships with them. He knows every child, parent, guardian, grandparent, aunt, uncle, neighbor, and sibling that comes onto our property. To each of our families, Kevin is a familiar face, a trusted ally whom they can confidently depend on. Kevin has cultivated trust, forged partnerships, and fostered a sense of mutual respect that is foundational to our collaborative efforts in supporting student success. Kevin knows how important school security is. He makes sure that the safety and well-being of our students and staff is the top priority. Whether discussing protocols with teachers on recess duty or addressing concerns and methods for improvements after drills, Kevin has everyone's best interest at the forefront of his mind. He makes sure that each staff member is well-versed in what to do to keep all of us safe. He welcomes questions and suggestions and scenario discussions without hesitation. Kevin is constantly vigilant and ever alert. Teachers and students feel safe when they see Mr. Kevin walking around the building and standing guard during recess. They know he is keeping watch over the cameras and constantly checking that our doors are properly closed. Each day, it is evident that Kevin is most deeply invested in ensuring security, prioritizing it with the utmost dedication. At first glance, one may be a little intimidated by Kevin's outward demeanor, his tall structure, his tall stature, his stoic presence, his deep and very loud voice. Yet, to only see his sternness would be an incomplete picture of the man that Kevin is. Behind that tough exterior lies a heart brimming with empathy and genuine care for every member of our school family. He's been spotted playing Connect Four and checkers with students who might need a little TLC. He often laughs with students in the morning as they tease each other about whether his team won last night's game. All staff and select visitors know to expect some playful banter when Mr. Kevin is around. And while his job is quite serious, he does find a way to squeeze a little good-natured fun into each workday, and for that, we are all grateful. Kevin is also a leader within his SSO team. He has trained several SSOs that have moved on to other buildings within the district. Kevin handles scheduling and coverage when his colleagues are absent, and he often schedules security for our after-school events. Our SSO team looks to Kevin for advice and support. Among his colleagues, he is respected and admired. So, it's easy to see why Kevin is the winner of this award. The Bow Monroe family truly loves and appreciates the work that Kevin does each day. He embodies the spirit of teamwork, working tirelessly alongside each of us to uphold the values of our school community while ensuring a safe, nurturing environment for all. Kevin is not merely a figure of authority, but a beacon of strength, compassion, and unwavering dedication to the well-being of our students and staff. Congratulations, Kevin. This award is so well-deserved.
My name is Mike Gaskell. I am the principal at Central Elementary School. Is there anybody here from Central tonight? How about Hammer Schul? Oh, I'm in the right place. Good, thank you. Jenna Klein, Central's Teacher of the Year. I'm delighted to express my enthusiastic recognition for Ms. Klein as the well-deserved selection for Teacher of the Year Award for Central Elementary. Having known Ms. Klein since she began as a special education teacher in our district, I thought she looked like one of my daughters, by the way. She was that young-looking, and she's still doing a good job with that. Many of us have witnessed her exceptional dedication to education, from her dynamic presence in the classroom to her leadership on various committees such as the Yearbook Club, Climate Leadership, Bullying Prevention, Coordinating Committee, and Read Across America. I could go on. Ms. Klein consistently demonstrates positivity, compassion, and a love for teaching that resonates with both students and staff. Ms. Klein's involvement in the Buddy Mentor Program, where she supports students in need, and her role as a mentor for new teachers further shows her commitment to well-being of our school community and everyone she touches. Ms. Klein is not only a reading specialist, but a true leader, advocate, and caring individual who excels at her job. I can personally speak about the support she gives to everyone, including me, as I transitioned to my role as the Central School Principal during the 2023-24 school year. Ms. Klein always has a focus on what's best for kids, and that's all that matters and should matter, right? I wholeheartedly congratulate Ms. Klein as Central's Teacher of the Year. Congratulations. We liked Ms. Christina's Kevin so much, we got another one. Kevin Steinbeck, Support Staff of the Year at Central Elementary. Today is a day to honor someone who embodies the spirit of dedication, kindness, and support that defines the very essence of Central Elementary School. Mr. Kevin Steinbeck is Central Support Staff of the Year, and he has earned this with five stars. For nine years, Mr. Kevin has been our school's heart and soul, a steadfast presence whose warmth and generosity touch the lives of each of us. From the moment you walk through the doors in the morning, actually before you even get through the doors, Mr. Kevin is there with a smile, a friendly greeting, and a reassuring presence that sets the tone for everyone for the day ahead. This kind of assurance is the first thing children and parents see when they arrive at Central. That kind of impact far outweighs any unsettling feeling someone may arrive at school with, calming all of us, especially kids. Mr. Kevin's contributions extend far beyond his role as a security officer at Central. He is a pillar of strength, a comforting adult who watches over us with unrelenting dedication, ensuring that our school remains a safe and welcoming environment where every student and adult feels valued and protected. It's not just the big things that makes Mr. Kevin special, it's the little moments of kindness, the small gestures that brighten our days and remind us that we are cared for, whether it's leaving funny pictures to make us smile or simply saying, "Good morning." To each and every one of us, Mr. Kevin goes above and beyond to make Central Elementary School feel just like home. So, in celebrating Mr. Kevin Steinbeck, our Support Staff of the Year, we are beyond grateful for his tireless dedication, his boundless compassion, and his unrelenting commitment to our school community. Congratulations, Mr. Kevin, and thanks to you for everything you do to keep us safe, happy, and inspired each and every day at Central. Here's to you, Kevin.
My name is Tatiana McBride, and I am the proud principal of Chittick Elementary School. Ladies and gentlemen, it is with great pleasure that we gather today to honor Ms. Cherie Upsher for her outstanding dedication and contributions to education. Cherie exemplifies the very essence of effective teaching through her embodiment of five key attributes. First and foremost, Cherie Upsher is a visionary cultivator of learning environments. Her ability to foster a culture where curiosity thrives and students are encouraged to explore, question, and innovate sets the foundation of lifelong learning. What truly sets Cherie apart is her unwavering passion for teaching and learning. This infectious enthusiasm ignites a spark in every student fortunate enough in her class, fostering a love for learning that extends far beyond the confines of the academic setting. Moreover, Cherie possesses exceptional communication skills. Whether simplifying complex concepts, engaging students in lively discussions, or providing constructive feedback, her ability to connect with students on a personal level is truly commendable. She extends collaborative conversations to families and colleagues alike. Her commitment to a collaborative working environment is certainly evident to all. In the ever-evolving landscape of education, adaptability and flexibility are paramount, and Cherie excels in this regard. She embraces change with open arms, constantly refining her teaching strategies to meet the diverse needs of every student, ensuring that no one is left behind. Last but certainly not least, Cherie Upsher is a master Last but certainly not least, Cherie Upsher is a master of classroom management. Her ability to create a nurturing yet disciplined environment sets the stage for optimal learning experiences. Clear expectations, mutual respect, and a sense of community are the cornerstones of Cherie's classroom. Cherie Upsher embodies the very essence of effective teaching. Her commitment to excellence, coupled with her genuine passion for education, has undoubtedly left a mark on the lives of her students and colleagues. Please join me in congratulating Cherie Upsher, our esteemed Teacher of the Year. It is also with great pleasure that we gather tonight to honor Mr. Harry Hudson as our Support Staff Member of the Year. In his role as security officer, Harry is not a guardian of our school's safety, but a pillar of support and trust within our school community. Harry exemplifies consistent vigilance. He watches over our school with a steadfast dedication, ensuring the safety and security of every student, staff member, and visitor. His attention to detail and proactive approach creates a secure environment where learning and growth can flourish. Moreover, Harry is a master of building meaningful relationships. He goes beyond his duties to connect with students, greeting them by name, offering a friendly smile, and providing reassurance during times of uncertainty. Harry's genuine care and warmth fosters a sense of belonging and safety among our students, helping them thrive both academically and emotionally. Despite the inherent challenges of his role, Harry approaches every interaction with warmth, empathy, and respect. Whether he's assisting students, calming anxious parents during drop-off, or collaborating with fellow staff members to address security concerns, Harry's friendly demeanor fosters a sense of trust and reassurance within our school community. Harry Hudson would do anything for our school, our staff, and, most importantly, our students. He is a beloved member of our Chittick family. Please join me in congratulating Harry Hudson, our esteemed Support Staff Member of the Year.
All right. Good evening. My name is Niree Delgado, and I am the proud principal at Frost Elementary School. All right, go Frost. It is my pleasure to present the Educator of the Year Award for Frost Elementary School. Growing up, most young girls use their imagination to set their bedrooms up as a classroom with their dolls as the students. You create the warmth, compassion, and love that your teachers have for you, and most little girls, including myself, were emulating Ms. Jamie Durkhas. Ms. Durkhas has been an educator for the last 15 years and has used her role to impact the lives of so many students. She makes sure that each child that enters Room 1203 feels welcomed and loved every time they enter that door. She is consistently changing her teaching style to meet the individualized needs of her students. As a teacher, she is still a student and tries to perfect her craft so that each student is taught and she becomes a resource for colleagues and parents. Being reflective is not easy to do, but when you care enough and want the very best for your students, it comes so naturally. Mrs. Durkhas is self-reflective in what she does that she knows when to reteach a lesson, pull a small group, or provide supplemental support. I have even asked her to share her teaching strategies with staff in many professional development settings to present best practices. Ms. Durkhas has classes filled with some very big personalities, and she has handled classroom management with optimism and grace. She takes time out of her lunch to spend time with her students and to build rapport and establish those critical relationships that allow her to just a student's behavior with a raised eyebrow. She could quiet a room with a glance and encourage a child to take a risk with her amazing smile and ignite fits of giggles with one silly face. She sees the best in every student. It is never what they can't do, it is always what they will and what they can do. Year after year, she works her magic and turns out more compassionate, socially aware, and confident seven-year-olds. Some great teachers are born that way, and others are a result of hard work. Can you imagine the results when those two things become equal parts? At Frost, we don't have to imagine it, we see it whenever we walk into Ms. Durkhas's classroom. The difference between a good teacher and a great teacher is really a large matter. It is the difference between a lightning bug and lightning from Mark Twain. And we have our lightning, and that's Mrs. Jamie Durkhas, a great teacher. Could you please congratulate Ms. Jamie Durkhas on her award? Okay. Mrs. Saraz. I remember meeting Ms. Saraz the first day when I walked in Frost Elementary School as a new principal. I never imagined that it would be the same moment where I met the person who would be my special gift during our new journey together in East Brunswick Public Schools. Our first conversation was a little strange. She asked me, "How many years have you been a principal?" I said, "It's my first." And I said, "How long have you been a lead secretary?" She said, "It's my first year." We looked at each other and said, "Uh-oh, here we go." But we immediately started talking about how we were going to make this the best year we ever had, and we did. Every day, I have someone I can count on that has the same love and care for children that I do. We meet every morning to debrief and prepare for the day ahead, and we get our game plan ready, which normally changes the minute we have it finalized and put in place. She is not defined by her title as lead secretary because she goes above and beyond that every day. From finding lunchboxes to assisting with recess duty, Mrs. Saraz is everywhere, making sure things are done right and right on time. She is the glue that holds everything together with a can-do attitude. She embodies the value of teamwork, integrity, and reliability. Mrs. Saraz is always willing to help staff members to make their day easier. The front office plays an essential role in the day-to-day activities of our school. It is the place where our day begins and is the place where our day ends. And Mrs. Saraz is able to create an atmosphere where it feels good to gather and refuel the positive energy required to give our best to the students in which we serve. It's not always about what you do, it's about how you do it. She has a way of answering questions before you ask, and she can organize the building substitutes with her eyes closed. Mrs. Saraz adds a component to Frost that cannot be duplicated. It is not often that you have the chance to thank someone in open forum like this, nor do you get to tell a friend how much you mean to them. And I am lucky enough to get the opportunity to do both. Kalen, you are truly my right hand, and I appreciate all that you do for Frost. Congratulations on being the Support Staff Member of the Year.
You should not have done that. Good evening, everybody. My name's Joanne Shamelowitz, and I'm the proud principal of Irwin School. Have you ever met somebody, and in the first five minutes of knowing them, you knew they were your person? That is who I stand here to talk to you about tonight, with immense pride and admiration as we gather to celebrate an extraordinary educator, Kimmy Dombrowski, who has been named Irwin School's Teacher of the Year. In the words of those who know her best, "Kimmy embodies professionalism, kindness, and unwavering dedication to her craft." As one testimonial highlights, she's very professional, kind with everyone, caring, and listens to everyone. These qualities form the foundation of her remarkable contributions to our school community. As one of our school's reading specialists, Kimmy's impact extends far beyond her classroom walls. Her colleagues commend her hard work, knowledge, and willingness to go above and beyond for students and teachers. She's constantly preparing and sharing resources and ideas on how we can help students succeed, they attest. Kimmy's commitment to student success is evident in her personalized approach to teaching, ensuring that each child receives the support they need to thrive. Kimmy does magic. She teaches kids to read. Moreover, Kimmy's leadership and enthusiasm are infectious. If we have a committee at Irwin School, Kimmy is on it. Her colleagues recognize her as a true leader who takes the initiative and inspires others with her boundless energy. "Her enthusiasm is endless," one colleague remarks, "and her students are so excited to go with her to improve their reading skills." Kimmy's dedication to professional growth and her expertise in reading instruction make her an invaluable resource to both students and staff. It's clear from the outpouring of testimonials that Kimmy got that she impacts our school community and its profound and far-reaching. Her infectious enthusiasm, tireless dedication, and unwavering commitment to excellence make her a truly deserving of the title Teacher of the Year. I'm so grateful to have Kimmy as part of Irwin School's community and leadership team. She is tapped into the needs of the building and selfless in her commitment and dedication to all of us, most especially to our most at-risk students. Kimmy, on behalf of the entire Irwin School community, I extend my heartfelt congratulations to you. Your passion, kindness, and dedication inspire us all, and we are so grateful for the positive impact you make every day. Congratulations as Irwin School's Teacher of the Year. Today, we gather to celebrate excellence, dedication, and the embodiment of what it means to be invaluable members of a school community. So therefore, it is with great pleasure and heartfelt admiration that I stand here to talk to you about Jackie Baver, Irwin School Support Staff Member of the Year. If you have had the privilege of working alongside Jackie, consider yourself truly fortunate. To collaborate with her is to step into a realm where dreams become reality. Jackie's impact extends far beyond the walls of our classrooms, the unsung hero who enriches the lives of the teachers and students who work with her. Jackie possesses an innate ability to understand and anticipate the needs of our students. With unwavering dedication, she immerses herself in their world, fostering an environment where each individual can thrive. Her nominators had this to say about Jackie: "She knows her students so well that she anticipates the problems or confusion they might have," which illustrates her profound insight and dedication to their success. "Her repertoire of strategies is as diverse as it is effective, seamlessly adapting to the needs of the classroom she supports." Her colleagues also attest, "She tries many different strategies, whether they are the ones she has developed herself or an idea that's been shared with her. This flexibility and willingness to innovate are key pillars of her success." But Jackie's influence doesn't stop there. She offers all manner of support for both students and colleagues alike. She has a great sense of humor and has become an integral part of the culture of the classroom, highlighting her ability to foster a positive learning environment. Jackie doesn't just work alongside us, she taps into the emotional well-being of those around her, students and teachers alike. Her commitment to building meaningful connections extends beyond the classroom, and she takes the time to know each student personally, delving into their lives, their passions, and their aspirations. So it is with great joy that we honor Jackie Baver as Irwin School's Support Staff of the Year. I'm proud to reflect on the impact she's made on our students, and I know she will continue to do so as the years go on. Congratulations, Jackie.
My name is Rachel Weitzencorn, and I am the proud interim principal of Lawrencebrook Elementary School. Lawrencebrook Elementary School is so proud to recognize Katherine Kvarcik as our Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Kvarcik encapsulates what anyone would hope for in a basic skills instructor for math. Between her academic knowledge, professionalism, warm personality, and devotion, the entire Lawrencebrook School and the East Brunswick School District are fortunate to have her guiding our students. She is a ray of sunshine, finding the positive in challenging situations. She recently has even been named our NJSLA enthusiast because she brought sunshine during our testing process. She is always the first person to ask, "How can I help?", and the last person to leave when assisting her colleagues and students. Mrs. Kvarcik is a role model for all. She has a dedicated work ethic and a moral compass that is focused on the character education and social-emotional learning that our students thrive on. Not wanting to keep her insights to herself, she partners with her colleagues on a variety of projects to further extend her skills to others. For example, she has partnered with another teacher this year to start monthly voluntary professional development for new teachers, helping everyone become acclimated to their new career path. What has been most exciting is that many veteran teachers are even stopping by to this program that they are finding great value in from hearing and learning from Mrs. Kvarcik's mentoring. Mrs. Kvarcik also brings innovation to the classroom. She has found ways to make curriculum meaningful to teachers so that the instruction will be received by students of all academic levels. Mrs. Kvarcik instructs the teachers and the students on how to use manipulatives and other color-coded organizational systems to help students have those aha moments in their learning. She is always ready to model what good instruction looks like and help teachers feel comfortable turnkeying what they have learned into future lessons. As a math specialist, Mrs. Kvarcik lives what she teaches. She has utilized data-tracking systems to help monitor her students' areas of struggle so that she can provide interventions that best support opportunities for growth and learning. Math performance within the school has trended toward more students demonstrating meeting or exceeding grade level in math, which should in part be attributed to the work she does with her teachers and her students. In a meeting earlier this year, her supervisors commended her and discussed using her data tracking system as a model for other teachers and basic skills instructors within the district. Mrs. Kvarcik is also well-loved by the families of her students. She has created toolkits for her students to use while receiving basic skills instruction, and those tools are shared with families so that the parents feel less intimidated by math vocabulary. She has worked seamlessly in helping to roll out the new math curriculum last year. She has worked seamlessly in helping to roll out the new math curriculum last year and helped staff feel competent in entering year two of the program. She has partnered with our instructional coach to spend time during each faculty meeting, providing real-time feedback to teachers as they create lesson plans, understand data, and use assessments to drive for future instruction. This year's focus on small group instruction has led her to shake up preconceived notions about what small groups should look like and helped teachers develop what small groups look like when students' needs are at the forefront. Outside of her position as a basic skills instructor, she spends her time giving back to her local community through involvement in voluntary religious leadership, as well as collaborating with other school professionals to provide professional development. She prides herself on her strong commitment to her family and friends, and each person that encounters Mrs. Kvarcik leaves her presence feeling better about him or herself. As an interim principal and a dear friend, it is an absolute honor to call you up and recognize you as the Teacher of the Year for Lawrencebrook. Not an hour goes by that we do not hear over the radio, "Custodian Jessica, custodian Jessica, can you please go to room whatever for a cleanup?" Her hard work does not go unnoticed by the staff of Lawrencebrook, and that is why we would like to recognize Jessica Magan... excuse me, yes, Jessica Maganallara as our Support Staff Member of the Year. Her hard work does not go unnoticed by the staff at Lawrencebrook. Our building's daily functions would not run smoothly without her. She makes sure our school is always safe, clean, and stocked each day with what both the students and staff need. Whether there is a water spill, a bathroom overflow, an ill student, or something that needs fixing, Jessica comes to our rescue in a moment's notice. Many of the tasks she does are behind the scenes but are necessary for our school day to go as planned. For example, every time it is raining outside, Jessica makes it a point before the day even begins for the students to put out an extra mat by the arrival doors, as well as a special air blower to ensure that the floors are dry and not slippery for our students and staff. This is something that is prepped and ready to go, anticipating the safety needs of all. Jessica is also a wonderful individual who supports us and supports our PTA. She collaborates with our PTA board and members to set up, clean up, and prepare for community-building events such as the Ice Cream Social, International Night, and Family Fun Nights. She is often seen looking very content when she sees the students and families enjoying their time together. She is quite humble, shying away from any public recognition for her hard work. Mrs. Maganallara simply says, "I am happy to help." Jessica has been a wonderful addition to our staff with her warm smile, positive attitude, and amazing work ethic, which makes her the perfect award winner for Support Staff Member of the Year at Lawrencebrook. Congratulations.
I am Cheryl Jones, Principal of Memorial Elementary School, here to introduce our very special teacher and support staff winners for the 2023-24 school year. Gina Donato, Memorial School Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Donato is the epitome of what a teacher should be. Gina never stops thinking of her students. She is in constant contact with staff and parents, even at night, discussing ideas. She reflects on what she does constantly and is always looking for ways in which we can enhance the learning for all students. Furthermore, she creates good study tactics for her students so that the lessons of the day can be reinforced appropriately at home. Gina is one of the most positive upbeat people in this school. She greets each day with a smile, and the students are aware that she cares about them. She is patient and fun, all wrapped into one. Mrs. Donato creates songs, writes poems, and even acts out the lessons to help enforce skills with her students. When you step into her classroom, you can tell how happy she is to be here and how eager she is to help the students learn. Her excitement to teach is obvious. Gina is also a leader in our school. She works on multiple committees to ensure a positive school climate. Gina is a part of our Sunshine Committee, which plans events for staff to build a rapport with one another. As one of her colleagues said, "Mrs. Donato is so deserving of this honor. She's a teacher we all wish we had as a child and a teacher we all aspire to be as adults." Congratulations to Memorial School's Teacher of the Year, Gina Donato. Ellen Lavenko, Memorial School Support Staff of the Year winner. Ellen is truly an amazing instructional assistant. Ellen is always first and foremost about her professional duties. She has a way of working with the students that puts them at ease. When a teacher needs to rely on Ellen to monitor a student she is working with, they can be sure that Ellen will meet all their needs and with a smile and positive attitude. When it comes to baking delicious treats, Ellen's yummy creations are always on the top of our list. Her rice pudding is the creamiest, her chocolate chip cookies are the chewiest, and all delivered with the trademark smile and cheery outlook is Ellen Lavenko. Ellen also loves being involved and will try to make it to as many school events as possible. She loves taking pictures and will even send them to the PTA to use for the yearbook. She can brighten up anyone's day and lends a helping hand and strong support to all the students under her care. For these reasons and more, Ellen Lavenko is the Memorial School Support Staff of the Year winner. Congratulations.
Good evening. I'm Joe Sutari, Principal of Warns Dorfer Elementary School. In our daily lives, we all know a person we work with who's a master at their craft, another person who's a no-nonsense hard worker who gets even the toughest jobs done, someone else with whom we work that everyone wants to work with, and still another who has earned the respect of everyone in the building. It's rare, however, that one person fills all these roles. This year, Warns Dorfer's Teacher of the Year does exactly that, and I have the pleasure to introduce her to you, Michelle Reese Board. Michelle is a 27-year veteran Warns Dorfer teacher. She's taught kindergarten, second grade, special education in multiple grades, and she is currently an essential leader on our awesome kindergarten team. Her students and her colleagues love her. I had the pleasure of working very closely with Michelle when she served for six years, I believe, as Warns Dorfer's Instructional Coach. As our coach, Michelle moved Warns Dorfer forward instructionally by leading PD, modeling instruction, helping teachers help students meet their goals, and being a solve-any-problem resource for an at times overwhelmed principal. Most importantly, she continues to be a standard bearer for the instructional excellence that defines our schools. With her students, she is kind and soft-spoken. She never raises her voice, but she has that teacher magic that lets students know that she means business. Michelle is an artist. She brings her creativity into her classroom, and, we won't pressure her to prove it to you tonight, but at last year's faculty party, Michelle ruled the karaoke machine and showed off her beautiful singing voice. Along with our students and staff, who are very proud to have her as a teacher and colleague, Michelle has a loving family who are also very proud of her. In the audience tonight to share in her special night are her sons Logan and Ethan, and her daughter Elizabeth, and her husband Mitch. I thank you all for sharing such a wonderful teacher and wonderful person with us. It is with great pride on behalf of our school community that I congratulate her as Warns Dorfer's Teacher of the Year, Michelle Reese Board. Our Support Person of the Year is Mary Lou Cheseare. Mary Lou is kind, caring, and compassionate, and she does an incredible job working with an incredible group of students. For these reasons and more, she is our Support Staff Person of the Year. Mary Lou has been a part of the East Brunswick Special Education Department working in our autism classes since 2019. She has worked in three different schools, but always with the same lead teacher, Carrie Wybraniak. Carrie will not let her go because when you find someone as talented as effective as Mary Lou, you do not let them go. As an instructional assistant, she is knowledgeable and enthusiastic, and she clearly loves her students. Mary Lou knows sign language. This skill has proven invaluable as she has made connections with our nonverbal students in ways that would otherwise not be possible. Mary Lou knows how to manage and work with a wide range of students, and she has proven to be an incredible asset to our building beyond her work in her assigned classroom, and I thank her for that. Thank you, Mary Lou. Her husband Joe, her daughter Emma, and her son Colin are here tonight to help us honor her as Warns Dorfer's Support Staff of the Year. Congratulations, Mary Lou Cheseare.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to all the honorees and congratulations to those celebrating milestones in their career this evening. I'm Russ Petronco, Principal of Hammerhill Upland Elementary School. Welcome to our home. Thank you. This evening, it's my distinct pleasure to announce staff awards to two extremely worthy individuals. Certain awards stand above the rest. Teachers are notoriously hard on themselves, and to be nominated by your peers and then selected in a highly competitive process puts these recipients on a special level. As is often the case, the letters of recommendation written by fellow staff members for these award winners have a common theme. In the case of our Teacher of the Year, these themes were dedication to her profession and skill as an educator. Her connection to students was mentioned frequently, as was her ability to motivate, make students feel valued, and her ability to help them reach their full potential. Finally, there was a commonality that described her as an outstanding colleague who, through her efforts, improves the entire Hammerhill School community. For these and a multitude of other reasons, I'm thrilled to announce Ms. Allison Skoronsky is our Teacher of the Year. I don't want to embarrass Ms. Skoronsky further, but she thanked me for keeping it brief because the one thing that is common to both of these recipients is they would much rather be working with students than hearing about their accolades. In the case of our Support Staff Member of the Year, several sentences in one of her recommendation letters stood out, which I'd like to read verbatim to you. The author shared, "Aside from her work ethic, she truly loves each of the kids she works with and builds a rapport with each and every one of them. She is invested in their lives and takes the time to get to know each of their unique needs and backgrounds. She has dedicated her life to bettering the lives of our students." These are a small sampling, but represent the qualities that make Ms. Lauren Kaufman extremely deserving of being named our Support Staff Member of the Year. Congratulations, Ms. Kaufman.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Hannis. I'm the Principal of Churchill Junior High School. Tonight, you will meet two of Churchill's superstars, our Teacher of the Year and Support Staff Member of the Year, and I also need to call attention to two staff members who are also here tonight receiving award recognition for 40 years of service to the district, Ms. Connie Charleston and Mr. Jeff Sidleke. And when Ms. Tibbetts shared that small number, I just had to give recognition to them too. First, our 2024 Teacher of the Year, Mr. Mike Lasher. He is a veteran technology education teacher who teaches our seventh-grade STEM classes, media production lab, computational thinking, and coding with robotics. He is a 14-year veteran, a remarkable educator, who has an indelible impact on both students and colleagues alike. And you'll hear a little bit more about his work behind the scenes. He's even up in the booth tonight, pulling some of the buttons and the levers to make this presentation possible. Mike's dedication to his students is truly exceptional. He possesses a unique ability to engage and inspire learners of all backgrounds and abilities. His classes are not just about technology. They're about fostering creativity, critical thinking, and problem-solving. He encourages his students to explore, to experiment, nurture their creativity, and help them discover the endless possibilities within the world of technology. As a colleague, Mike is an invaluable asset to the school. He generously shares his expertise and resources. He's always willing to collaborate and support others. He is a true teacher-leader. I count on Mike frequently to help out newer teachers and to model for new and veteran teachers alike when needed. He's always willing to lend a hand. He makes himself available to assist teachers with special projects that require the use of technology. He's the go-to guy in the school when a teacher needs to utilize microphones, speakers for presentations, and not only does he come to the classroom to set it up, he frequently checks in on the staff member to make sure everything is working okay. Within the East Brunswick community, as explained, Mike is often the man behind the scenes, both at Churchill and here at Hammerhill in the JM PAC. Last month, we hosted a seventh- and eighth-grade TGIF class on a Friday night in April. We had a little hiccup with the DJ with an unforeseen circumstance, and about 30 minutes before the event, we found that the DJ wasn't going to make it. So I was quickly trying to figure out how I could rig a school-appropriate seventh- and eighth-grade playlist that kids would be interested in through our soundboard to play in our cafeteria. I called Mike. I said, "I need a little help here. There's a lot of levers." And he said, "Don't worry. I'll be there in 10 minutes." Not only did he set up the soundboard, get a playlist going, and get it going to the point where we were taking requests from students, better than probably any DJ could do, but he also rigged up some multicolor lights on the front of the stage. You wouldn't have even known that we were missing the DJ, and the students had a great time. And that's what he's all about, is making sure... time, and that's what he's all about, is making sure it's always there for the students. So Mike is not just an outstanding technology teacher, he's a dedicated and passionate educator, a true team player, who goes above and beyond to create a supportive, innovative, and inspiring learning environment. It's difficult to summarize all the ways that Mike positively impacts our students, our staff, our school community, and East Brunswick, and his exceptional contributions to our school, and his unwavering commitment to his students make him the ideal candidate for Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to Churchill Junior High School's Amazing Teacher of the Year, Mr. Mike Lasher. Next, I'd like you to meet Churchill Junior High School's Support Staff Winner for 2024, Mrs. Radwa Omar. Everyone in the building is familiar with Radwa's smile, her enthusiastic attitude, and her endless energy and passion for her students. Radwa started her career in East Brunswick Public Schools at Hammershold Elementary School, in, uh, middle school, rather, in January of 2020, and moved to Churchill in September of that year to support students in our special programs classes. She is a pillar within the school, within our Special Education Department, and our community. Ms. Omar consistently sheds positivity to staff and students as she greets everyone with a smile, as they get off the bus, as they get out of their cars, or as they walk down the hallway in Churchill, every single day. This welcoming attitude has been a constant, whereas many students and staff know and love her. In the classroom, she's a leader and a problem solver by taking initiative, and she will do whatever it takes to reach children. She is always the first person to provide support, and she uses her intuition to provide high-quality instruction while still leaving room for students to develop and demonstrate independence. It is clear Ms. Omar prioritizes student success, and she always provides support to our staff by guiding students and teachers, like this one, myself right up here, alike, with interventions and little tricks that she has identified that help our students. She's always eager to learn, she is excellent at accepting feedback, and is constantly evolving as a trusted educator. Radwa's first experience was a new, uh, was a, first assignment was a new experience in our self-contained autism classroom setting. Being in special programs classes, our educators must always be ready to adapt, change, all while maintaining a supportive environment. Ms. Omar quickly became the go-to person within our special programs team, and teachers have often described Radwa as their right hand in education. Radwa is flexible in her role, stepping into different situations that may arise and may also, um, and may also not be her direct assignment. For example, she's a natural leader and assists many of our staff with translation needs during meetings. She is selfless and has often cut her breaks short to help out in any possible way, whether it's with other staff or with students. She undoubtedly deserves this award, so please join me in congratulating Ms. Radwa Omar as the Churchill Junior High School 2024 Support Staff Winner of the Year.
I'm Glenn Pazinko, the interim principal at East Brunswick High School, and it's my pleasure to talk about our award recipients this evening. Our science supervisor, Ms. Jessica D. Benedetti, describes our Teacher of the Year for East Brunswick High School as "a devoted member of our educational community and an exceptional science educator who has consistently demonstrated unparalleled dedication to fostering student growth and success." Mrs. Barton possesses an extraordinary talent for making the world of science come alive for her students. Her enthusiasm for the subject is infectious and serves as a catalyst for sparking curiosity and a genuine love for learning among her students. Through innovative teaching methods, captivating demonstrations, and engaging experiments, Mrs. Barton consistently captures the attention and interest of her students, making complex scientific concepts accessible and enjoyable. What truly sets Mrs. Barton apart, however, is her unwavering support for each student's academic and personal growth. She goes above and beyond to ensure that every student feels valued and understood, challenging her approach to suit individual learning styles and needs. She takes the time to provide personalized guidance, encouraging struggling students to persevere and challenge, challenging high achievers to reach even greater heights. And Mrs. Barton's classroom, a nurturing and inclusive environment prevails, where each student feels supported, encouraged, and inspired to excel. Mrs. Barton exemplifies excellence in parent-teacher communication, consistently maintaining an open and transparent line of dialogue that greatly benefits the students and the overall educational experience. She understands the pivotal role parents play in their child's academic journey, and she goes above and beyond to ensure parents are well-informed and engaged partners in the educational process. Beyond the classroom, Mrs. Barton dedicates countless hours to extracurricular activities, offering additional chemistry support and organizing the Science Team Club. She cares about activities happening in the building, such as Bring Your Child to Work Day, where she allowed the children of staff to come and participate in the science lab with her students. She volunteers to help support Science Career Night and is helping to develop an elementary science night this, this school year. Mrs. Barton is also a leader in this, on the science team. Her willingness to share best practices, insights, and knowledge with colleagues has elevated the entire science team. Mrs. Barton is always approachable, encouraging, open dialogue, and inspiring a culture of continuous learning and improvement. Her membership and guidance have been invaluable to new and veteran teachers alike, instilling a sense of confidence and enthusiasm in the pursuit of educational excellence. Mrs. Barton and her husband are the parents of two daughters who both aspire to be teachers themselves. Ms. Barton couldn't be here tonight, but I ask you to please join me in congratulating East Brunswick High School's Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Morgan Barton. East Brunswick High School Support Staff Employee of the Year, Sula Katsiafakis, has been the main child nutrition cook at the high school for the past 21 years. Every school day, Sula is responsible for preparing delicious meals for a school of over 2,000 students. Sula uses her extraordinary culinary skills to ensure that breakfast and lunch are well-stocked with savory meals at up to four different serving stations. Sula is well-known and extremely conscientious and a hard worker, who is a pleasure to work with and be around. Sula's work ethic is so strong that on those rare days when she's not at work, it takes two of her colleagues to complete her tasks. Sula truly is a great employee and an outstanding cook. While she couldn't be here tonight, she is well-deserving in the honor of Support Staff Employee of the Year at East Brunswick High School. Congratulations, Sula.
My name is Gerald Skank, Director of Facilities Management, and it's my honor to introduce and present to some Mr. Majid Estefanos as the Support Operation Facilities 2024 Support Staff Member of the Year. As one of the department's valued HVAC, or Heating-Ventilation-Air Conditioning Technicians, Majid is a critical part of maintaining the district's huge inventory of mechanical, environmental, control equipment, and, uh, which includes 535 unit classroom unit ventilators, 250 rooftop units, 37 high-efficiency condensing boilers, and a host of circulation pumps, motors, and digital control equipment. This year, Magid excelled in both in individual and team performance aspects. First, as an individual technician, Majid has been incredibly responsive and reliable. Specifically, on multiple occasions this year, Majid volunteered personal time to respond, troubleshoot problematic HVAC systems which affected the units, uh, which affected events held at the high school's auditorium and our own performance arts, art center here. Majid, in each case, Majid was able to quickly evaluate the equipment, diagnose the problem, restore climate-controlled temperatures to support hundreds of supporters, uh, performers, and thousands of spectators. In the team performance aspect, award submission comments from Majid's peers really says it all. One submission said, "All-around awesome worker." Another said, "Hard-working and very dedicated to his craft and well-respected by his peers." I think there's a consistent trend here. Without a shadow of a doubt, Majid is deserving of the Support Staff Award and this public, and this level of public recognition. His, his knowledge, expertise, and willingness to help truly embody the spirit and intent of this award. Again, it's my pleasure to present the award to Mr. Majid Estefanos.
Thank you. Now I'd like to introduce to you the staff members who have served our district for 25 years. Please join me in congratulating Margaret Anderson, Maggie, elementary teacher. Is Maggie here? I think I saw her. Come on up, get your certificate. Dr. Valeski has a certificate here for you. I'm looking at how many of you are from Chittick, and I think, boy, 25 years ago was a really, uh, big hiring year for that principal. Lucy's not here? And those who couldn't be here tonight, Harriet Berg, Susan Delavolpe, Nancy Hoffman, Terrence McKibben, Greg Marino, Maureen Tyler, and Kimberly Valdada. It is incredible for me to think about people who have worked here in East Brunswick Public Schools for 40 years. The stories they have, the things they have seen, even if they wanted to write a book, nobody would believe it. Our two other 40-year recipients were not able to be here tonight, but we must recognize them, Marcus Borden and Jeffrey Sidleke. Thank you all very much for coming tonight, and I'm going to turn the meeting back over to Mrs. Lacks.
Thank you. I can't put a script on my door that's coming back. I'm actually going to call a quick recess, and we'll be back up on the dais in a few minutes. Okay, welcome back. That was a lot of fun, as always. We are up to the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. We do allow three minutes of comment time. It is the public's time to speak to the board, and we always remind you, it is not a time to have a dialogue, so please do not mistake our silence as not caring about the issues being raised. We always ask you to have your information left with the women in the back of the room so that we can follow up with anything necessary. That being said, is there anyone this evening that wishes to speak to the board? Okay, no. Then I'm going to club, uh, close the public portion, and bring us to our agenda this evening.
Before we move on to support education, I would ask that we remove Items 2 and 3 on Board of Education.
Do you need a motion for that?
No, no, just, uh, we won't take a vote on those.
Okay, then I am going, is there anything else that needs separating out? Then I am going to ask for a motion on this evening's agenda, with the exception of Board of Education Items 2 and 3. Moved by Mrs. Becker, who's whispering.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Herrick. Is there any discussion on any of the items on this evening's agenda? I'm sorry, could you repeat that, President Lacks?
Sure. So this is the time, I'm going to ask for, uh, you can have a discussion. So because I have the entire agenda together, if there's something in a particular portion that you would like to bring up, now would be the time to do it.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mrs. Reese.
I think this is covered, but I had a quick question about the substitute staffing. Would this be the right time to ask about that?
Um, where's Mrs. Tibbetts? Oh, there you are. Oh, sorry. Yeah, you can ask that question.
Oh, thank you so much. So just if you could explain the chart for us a little bit, you had this, uh, different base pay rates depending upon who's, uh, company's odd, how that works. Thank you.
Barbara, just for, um, our reference point, what item was that, please?
Uh, it was Financial Services Agenda Item 1.
Thank you.
Okay, so I don't have the chart in front of me, but I think that I know what you're referring to. So, our substitute services have a rate to pay for the substitute themselves, and then the rate that we pay the, the company, right? So the company gets a little bit of that money, and the staff member, who is the substitute, gets a little bit of that money. And there's different rates depending on what position that substitute is filling. So the chart going down is the different positions, and then to the left-hand side, I'm sorry, to the right-hand side should be what we're paying the actual company.
And are we competitive with other districts, would you say, in our area?
We are. I mean, this is the time where people are continually, you know, districts are continually raising those rates to be more competitive. We did that just recently, uh, last year, maybe, I think, we raised our substitute We raised our substitute rates, and it has been much more helpful.
No, we appreciate it. And I understand that this service also helps us to find, which is very hard to find, qualified substitute teachers, so that this company does an excellent job in doing that.
Yes, they absolutely do.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Reese. Okay, I'm going to ask the secretary to please call the roll. And just for the new board members, you can vote yes or no, and if there's anything you want to abstain on, you can just let him know for the record which items you'd like to.
Okay. Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Mr. Gozwami? Mrs. Herrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Dr. James?
Yes, but I would like to abstain from Financial Services, Item Number 4, respectfully, and Board of Education Items Number 2 and 3, please.
The minutes.
They pulled, yes.
They were pulled.
Oh, you pulled that out already.
So Financial Services, Item Number 4.
Item Number 4, please.
Noted.
Thank you.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
And President Lacks?
Yes. Motion carries. I'm going to ask for committee reports, information items, and for the good of the cause for the moment for the board, but I just wanted to say again how much I love this evening, even though I was caught off-guard. It's okay, I forgive you, because there really is something so special about these awards, and even more so because they are voted on or nominated by their peers. I've always thought that was something amazing that we do in this district, because we know they're the best of the best, but the fact that their coworkers think that, and hearing our principals this evening, it just, it moves me, you know? I remembered that about staff appreciation, which I ran in the elementary and in this building for so many years, and I wasn't kidding, that was actually a true story about one time when I had to get gifts, and I thought I was going to have the teachers and maybe the specials, and my kid came up with 30 people in the building, and I will tell you, we thanked every one of those 30, so we really do have the best of the best here, so. I just wanted to thank everybody again and congratulate the people, and to the 40-year staff, I was here 40 years ago, so hopefully I didn't cause too much trouble for you back then. Would anyone else have anything? We have committee.
I do.
We're quiet for tonight, but Mrs. Herrick is going to save me and say something.
So first... Sorry.
We're so polite.
So first, I want to welcome the two new board members. This is a very challenging job, and it's thankless, time-consuming, emotional-draining, but I really appreciate your come-up at this challenging time, and I'm very positive you will do a good job, so I'm watching, so thank you. And second, so in this building, there's a lot of good things happening, so as Dr. Valeski mentioned, there are the STEM and robotics student showcase, I was here that night. You know, I believe almost 300 students and with many parents show up. I was so amazed, so many young kids, they got absorbed to stay focused. One little girl, I didn't ask her which grade she is, she stayed so focused, coming with a robotic, looked like nobody existed, only herself. So that event is very inspiring, our new children, young children, opened the door to them. That is a great program. I want to appreciate Dr. Valeski and the principal here, so they are very good job. But this time, I believe they only use part, partial of the cafeteria, so maybe next year, the program expand, they can utilize the entire cafeteria to reduce the traffic, because it's so crowded and so many students show up with their parents. I'm very sure next year, there will be more children and more parents will show up, so very good, very good program. And I was here for the orchestra, for the hamshoe students, those young musicians are so good, they play so great songs. I don't know, I almost know nothing about music, but when I heard, I enjoyed it a lot. So it's, our children are with many, many talents. So for those things, I want to thank Ross Patrangelo, he is doing a good job. It's my privilege here, I talk to him, he's working so hard to make this building full of joy and very productive. And NJASBA, I'm on the executive board for the NJASBA and Middlesex County School Board. Middlesex County School Board celebrates two board members for their 30 years' service. So one is New Brunswick, Edward Spencer, he served the board for 30 years. Another one is Tom River, Cynthia Obnik, she served for 30 years. When I talked to her, how could you do for 30 years? And what did you do? For the new board members, and for me, too. She said, when I vote, I ask me three times, is this good for students? Is this good for students? Is this good for students? That is so helpful for me. You know, in New Jersey, the longest-served school board member is a gentleman called Cavenback. He served for 60 years, from 1962 to 2022, so unbelievable, 60 years is what a sacrifice. So that inspired me, you know, I got to work hard for our children, you know, and only for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hong. Mrs. Herrick?
Thank you. I'm going to read, just because I don't want to mess any of this up, but on Thursday, April 18th, I had the opportunity to attend the Unsung Heroes Student Recognition Dinner that was held at Old Bridge High School. In attendance was fellow board member, Mr. Hong, as well as high school administrators. And for this event, administrators were asked to nominate a student who makes your school a better place simply because they are part of it and may be overlooked under more traditional criteria. So two East Brunswick students received awards. They were at the event accompanied by their proud parents. One student, her name was Natalia Andrea Taravilo Yuria, and she is a junior who, according to administrators, goes above and beyond in her classes and is a true leader in the ESL classroom. She volunteers to be a buddy for numerous Spanish-speaking students, helping them with assignments, translations, and ensuring that they feel comfortable. She is commended by the administration for making a difference in the lives of her peers. Keely DeCiana, who is also awarded, who also received an award, is a senior who is part of the Civil Air Patrol, where she has gained invaluable leadership and life skills. Her experiences have helped her develop her leadership qualities and sense of responsibility. She hopes to serve her country in the future as a pilot in the Air Force. It was truly an evening of celebration for these amazing students who have positively contributed to their school communities. It was a really great night, and what I really loved was that the students sat with other students, so they could network with students from other schools across the county, and it was just such a positive event. And I'm sorry, I have a few more. So on Friday, April 19th, as Mr. Hannis said before, the Churchill PTA hosted TGIF for 7th and 8th graders. Unfortunately, we did run into a small dilemma with the DJ, but as Mr. Hannis said, Mr. Lasher, the administrators, teachers jumped into action, providing music, lights, taking song requests. The kids loved the karaoke and the snacks, and our evening was not complete, and Mr. Hannis actually left us out. Our evening was not complete until Mr. Hannis dressed up in his bear costume and came out and took pictures with the students. So a great time was had by all who attended. Thank you to the administrators, teachers, PTA parents, who worked so hard to ensure that all of our PTA events are a success. As Dr. Valeski mentioned earlier, on Monday, May 13th, I attended the year-end celebration for the Community Programs Adult School. Dr. Valeski and Mayor Brad Cohen were also in attendance. The celebration honored the success of the students, but also the program. The students were full of praise for their teachers and the overall program. Thank you to Amory Gilbert and her staff for planning a terrific, heartfelt evening. In addition, thank you to Community Programs for providing childcare the night that we held the Budget Forum. I also want to acknowledge my colleague, Mr. Cummings, for his speech at the Unity Walk on Monday. The Human Relations Council did an excellent job with the event, and to all the teachers and staff that were honored today, as well as the entire district, your commitment to our school community is commendable, and our successes are truly because of you.
Thank you, don't be sorry. That's wonderful, that's what you're supposed to do. Oh, Mr. Hong. This is good, actually, because I want to see if we can talk long enough so that Heather has the baby. Because how cool would that be? I'm just saying. Rob will kill me, but I'm just saying, that would be really neat. So keep going.
So the Unsung Hero was started 38 years ago by Middlesex County School Board Association. Now, entire state of New Jersey has this celebration program. Additionally, NJASBA started the Super Unsung Hero to honor school security personnel, bus drivers, janitors, so I hope East Brunswick School District can submit the nomination so our staff can be honored in October Atlantic NJASBA meeting.
That's a great idea, and I'm sure you all noticed that we had three of our security staff tonight for the support staff, which doesn't surprise me, because they really are so much more than just security.
Yeah, I was going to say, real quick, I wanted to also welcome our new members and just say how excited I am to work with you, and I know that the rest of the team here is as well, and clearly we have a lot of great challenges ahead of us, and which will take a lot of collaborative dialogue and thoughtful, you know, and patient work, and I look forward to the gifts and the expertise that you'll bring to that process. I'm just so energized and inspired by what we heard tonight, and I just need to kind of re-amplify that message. The dedication, the expertise, the compassion, the just ongoing, you know, goal of trying to do what's right for the kids in this district, and to do what's right for one another, and the recognition that it's hard, is really inspiring and impressive, and I'm so touched by that. I'm thinking of three individuals in particular as we kind of head into this season of graduation. One is Chris, who's not here with us tonight, who's, you know, moving on to Princeton next year. Another is a young man who is a part of the Human Relations Council that I was on, Andrew, who is heading to Yale next year. If I ever got into Princeton or Yale, my parents would have been ecstatic. I'm just so impressed by the fact that these young men, you know, are some of many who are just going on to pursue these really exciting initiatives and endeavors, and are good people who will continue to do great things. A final story I just wanted to share, yesterday, I have the privilege of doing a lot of my work from home, and so I get to get my second grader off the bus most days. She got off the bus yesterday, and the first thing she did was she held up her hand, and she had a nice Band-Aid across her hand, and then she pointed to her knee, and she had a nice big Band-Aid on her knee, and I said, Quinn, what happened? She said she fell, right? So she fell out on the blacktop, something that is very normal for a young child to do, and she got some nice cuts, and I said, well, what happened after that? And the nurse took her in, and she went on to tell the story of the people that cared for her. A small event, right? Like, no stitches, not a lot of blood, but a little bit. And one particular story stands out is a teacher named Miss Allen, who is not Quinn's teacher, who, you know, is part of the school community, is a second-grade teacher at Warrenstover, and she said that she kept coming in to check on me and just see how I was doing. And I don't know why she felt the need to do that, but that is a symbol of what exists here in this community, and that is what I find to be so inspiring. And we heard that tonight, people checking in on one another and taking care of one another. And I just feel honored to be a part of a community that lives by those rules and engages in that fashion, and I'm so grateful to be raising kids in this district, so that's all.
Thank you, Tim. And just think that in a couple of years, you may have, you've got three chances for the Ivy League, my friend. So if it can be done, and you see, that's two of our students in our graduating class. We do always have a nice, a nice representation with the Ivy Leagues. I'm sorry that the party has to end. I'm sorry that the baby was not born on stage, but thankfully, we don't have to worry about ratings, so. But the good news is that the next board meeting, we'll be having an unveiling of sorts. Or that. So...
I want to say something.
Oh, sure.
From the day the results are declared, everyone is telling me that you are going to have a lot of challenges. Everyone is trying to tell something, but I can assure that I am daring it. So I want to definitely do best for the schools, and for the community, for the school board members, our team, and for the staffs. So how much ever I hear every time, it is very challenging, 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 I'm daring it. I will try to do it. So everyone starts one day, right? So I am starting today. Thank you.
You guys picked the right time to start, because this is one of the best nights of the year. All right, I am going to ask for a motion, whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting. These subjects are, within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act, and are permitted to be discussed in closed session. The Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and action may be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforesaid subjects, and be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares that its discussion of the aforesaid subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
Second.
Move by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Hong. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and good night.